Thanks, everyone. We call the meeting to order. Crystal, do we have a quorum, please?
Mr. Mayor Moss? Congressman Robert M. Chairman President. Congressman Benjamin President. Mayor Pro Tem Young President. Congressman Robert President.
Thank you. At this time, would you please stand? Observe a moment of silence for me, and then we'll do the pledge. Thank you. Thank you. Join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. We have a couple of public comments. Mrs. Horsh? Can you have three minutes, please?
Thank you. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor Moss and members of the City Council, thank you for your continued service to the city and for all that you do to represent our citizens' best interests. Chief Franklin and Chief Snyder, thank you for your continued commitment and service to protect and keep our city safe. My name is Francis. I reside at 901 San Basque Court. Firstly, I wanted to thank Mayor Pro Tem Young for your help in attempting to resolve the damages my property easement sustained during the road construction by reaching out to the city administration. And I wanted to thank Manager Grimes. Although I know that you were not directly involved with the day-to-day or weekly dealings with the road construction, Mr. Grimes, I sincerely appreciate your time and assistance. As you all well know, for some time I have reported on the damages my property easement sustained and on the lack of resolution. I've continued to ask for your help, as I do at today's meeting. I respectfully ask for your help because damages remain unresolved, neglected, and dismissed by the city. I realize that at times, things happen that are beyond our control, that things tend to move slowly on city time, but it is hard to accept the lack of accountability of damages by the city, which is what I have experienced during the entire process of attempting to resolve the damages my property easement sustained during the road construction. I am reporting to the City Council that, in my opinion, there has been a consistent lack of accountability on the city's part to acknowledge all the damage that remains unresolved on my property easement. City ordinances should apply to everyone, including Jacob Martin, XIT, and the city, shouldn't they? The city's claim that the contractor completed and resolved all the damage on my property easement is, in my opinion, an undeniable and unjustified and merited and unequal treatment, especially when making me accountable for their damage, damage that I did not cause. It appears that I am being singled out because my perfectly sound concrete aggregate driveway easement and sidewalk were not removed and replaced, and my easement pre-construction did not have any standing water problems. Jacob Martin confirmed that my concrete aggregate easements did not need to be removed and replaced. The facts are, I did not worsen the pre-existing crack on my driveway. I did not cause a damage to the aggregate concrete approach when the road was removed and replaced. I am not causing the standing water in my easement after heavy rains. I am not causing the erosion on the west side of my driveway's easement, and I am not causing the erosion on the culvert area across my easement. All along, the city was made aware of the damages. In my opinion, too many times, I was and continue to be dismissed, treated unequally, and discriminated against by the city. The fact is that I was never asked to sign a liability waiver. I was never told by the city, XIT, nor Jacob Martin, that my property easement would sustain damage and that I would be made accountable for the damage. It is just plain unacceptable and wrong for the city to dictate to me or anyone else that I am accountable for damages that I did not cause. The fact is that neither the city nor the contractor resolved all deficiencies on my property easement, as the city claims. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Brad McCurley?
Brad McCurley, 109 Trinity Drive. I think this is my—my math could be bad because I grew up in Florida and went to public school there. I think this is my fourth or fifth time. Just to real quick, kind of recap, we had the driveway interior approach to my property. The size and the shape was changed, so it gone back and forth via email with the city. And at some point in March, they said, hey, you need to take this before City Council. And so in May, and there was a group of us had come, and I expressed some concern about my specific property. In fact, my neighbor next door to me, Roy, had also come. And so we had been several times. I think the last time I came was end of June, somewhere around there. And at that point, I was asking council because the city had told me to come to council was, hey, it sounds like the council had given the city directions on what to do about Crown and Ranch, but I live on Trendy Drive, and I have not gotten an answer. So that was about six or seven weeks ago. So I'm back, just again, asking. My neighbor Roy wasn't able to come tonight, but we would love the answer for the question we are asking about our home. I appreciate that council has answered that for Crown and Ranch. But when I reached out to the city a couple of weeks ago, their answer was, they've only gotten directions from council on Crown and Ranch. So again, just coming back, as I did several weeks ago, to get an answer for our property specifically with our driveway, and also, our neighbor was wondering the same thing. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is to approve the City Council meeting minutes of July 23rd, 2024. Do—we had a chance to review, and do we have a motion, please?
Make a motion when we approve the minutes for regular meeting of July 23rd.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next item, to discuss and take action on approval for Westwood Professional Services to proceed with the bid process and start the City Hall parking lot project. Tony?
City Mayor and Council, this is the—City Council approved the conceptual design plan for the City Hall parking lot, and Westwood continued forward with the design and construction plans to write the project for bid as was directed. Presented today is the request to begin the bid process with funding for the start of the parking lot project within eight to 10 weeks. They recommend the city proceed with Westwood Professional Services for bidding of the parking lot project.
Thank you. Any questions for Tony?
I got a couple of comments I'd like to steer council to. I'm wanting to recommend that we table this action. The—there's a couple of other components I'd like for council to consider when we do this. Right now, this is the parking lot aspect of it. It's my understanding that we may bring back the council proposal to do Veterans Memorial Plaza. I don't know what we've named it yet. But the Veterans site that's currently at 516, relocate that to the parking lot and make this part of the project. Couple of things that I'd like for you to consider tabling is, that'll increase the cost to this. Also, we would like to have all the work done on the parking lot at one time versus do work and then come back six months later and do it again. It's—the way that's going to be laid out is going to be near the entrance, anyway. So we would prefer that we table this, and then we can bring this up at a later date.
Motion to table. Postpone it.
Yeah, can we—I was going to make a—I'm just going to have the discussion first, Brian, on this.
Sure.
Because we are discussing Memorial Park and the next item, can we table—are you okay with tabling this until after item number three?
We can just take no action, and then both items can—
Take no action. That's—
Both agenda items can come back on the agenda at a future meeting.
I'd like to consider item number three before we make a motion on number two. No action.
We need a vote on that, Pat?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor? We're tabling items two and three.
Two.
No, two.
Considering three.
Two.
So three?
Yes.
What did we decide to do on three?
We're going to take—that up for action now.
Okay. Kingsgate Park concept plans and Memorial Park consideration for relocation.
Mayor and council staff met with Westwood Professional Services to review their first and second concept plan renderings for potential programming of Kingsgate Park, all of which was presented to the Parks Board for discussion at their quarterly meeting on August 6, 2024. Creation of these concepts considered the 2019 Parks and Trails Master Plan and its community feedback. Westwood suggested that the new community survey be conducted to reflect growth and demographic changes within the city, and that would likely involve two town hall meetings. Estimated cost for all improvements is totaling $7,813,950. That does not include the fee to create construction documents, separated into three areas or phases, ranging from what is perceived to be the most urgent and easiest to accomplish as Area 1, and progressing to more complex elements in Areas 2 and 3. Adding parkland to the City Hall site was discussed, and staff discussed the future of Memorial Park at 516 Ranch House Road, as Mr. Grimes had told you. Suggested that the park be moved to the site of City Hall. The concept plan for the City Hall parking lot shows a space in the southwest corner for future development Memorial Park. The conceptual design has not yet been requested, but an estimated cost for the basic elements expected for such project is $610,000 with a 30% contingency fee, plus approximately $50,000 for professional services of design, construction documents, as required—as done for other projects.
Mayor, council, that was the—so the $610,000 was—the would be added to the parking lot on the tabled action of item number two. And so one of the things I wanted for y'all's consideration was, can we go ahead and proceed to do both those things, both those items? That would probably require some kind of debt instrument to do it. It would be very low interest. I think Jake's going to bring it. We do have the cash to handle the parking lot, so we can proceed with that. But if you want to—this is my term—dress it up and make it look pleasant, then we would probably need—we're going to need extra funding. The contingency in the original parking lot, there's about 30% contingency, as Tony brought—mentioned. Anything over—I think me and Jake decided about $750,000, we get a little nervous on what we—on what we have cash on hand for. Does that make sense, or am I—
So you're wanting to put Memorial Park in with parking lot? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think, as you might imagine, I've already had a lot of discussions with Brian and Tony on this. We did take it to Parks Board. Everyone was excited about the idea. Where we come with including the parking lot and the potential Veterans Memorial Plaza with the Kingsgate option is, as Tony mentioned, one—a couple of the things that we're looking at doing is updating our survey for this Kingsgate Park. We did a survey about five years ago of our citizens of what the priorities were for park requests. So the idea is to update that survey. That will help us obtain grant money. And that needs to be done if we want to apply for grants. It'll also help us program Kingsgate Park. So doing another survey to see where we stand five years later and what the priorities of our citizens are for parks, now that we have more park space and have already accomplished a few things. We think that's very important. What that does is require time. We're looking at this fall, potentially having some town hall meetings, formulating a survey, having another town hall meeting to get the information back from that survey. That will help us in this Kingsgate. That will also allow us to talk about Veterans Memorial Plaza if we want to move that. So we feel like getting input through this survey process will help us, especially if we're looking at a financial instrument to complete the parking lot. And that's why I kind of said, because of the financial, do we want to just get what we can done on the parking lot? Or do we want to slow this down a bit and figure out exactly what we want to do?
What's the timeframe for that?
The survey—I think—we think we could do about three to four months. Kind of by Christmas, have everything I figured out so that we could be going to bid on the parking lot around January. So—and I know we're considering talking about separate items on this, but the idea for Kingsgate Park is to get more information. So this specific agenda item is to take about three to four months, talk to the citizens about what we might want, and what they like about this conceptual plan, what they might want to change about it, adopt that, and then potentially look at our fundraising or debt issuance early next calendar year, not fiscal year.
Yep.
So you're saying table two and three both for now? Or is there's no action to take on either one tonight?
Do we need any action on three?
No.
I don't think we do.
The only action you need to take is for us to authorize just to do the parking—I mean, the parking lot. I mean, the bid, the estimate that we got for the full—the full program out there. When I say just the parking lot, I'm talking asphalt and paint. It's just—we didn't—we didn't put in some other stuff when we did the bond a couple of years ago. So if you want to make it prettier and nicer, which I recommend we should, then I'm asking—I'll ask you to table it for now, and then we'll come back.
I'm going to say, how about no action on three, and then we'll go to two because I don't think we have any action for the Kingsgate Park.
No.
This is just staff will organize the survey, unless you need us to authorize Westwood to do the survey. So I would say no action on three, and then we can consider two. Does that work?
And I'll also speak to the fact that if you do delay it, that it—us not tearing up the parking lot prior to the Christmas tree lighting and all of that, it was going to coincide because we didn't realize how quickly the parking lot project could be done. And so she was saying that it would be torn up in a matter of eight weeks, eight, 10 weeks, in which case, that would be right in the middle of our celebrating the Christmas tree lighting and all of that. So we didn't really want that to be disrupted.
So what would the—are we okay with stressing locally at the same time? Okay. So—as far as two, what would—what's the level of deconstruction? Or what's—you know, I assume it's all got to be graded, leveled, and all sorts of things? Are we going to put down paving, or what's the plan?
There's a schematic in the packet of what it could look like. Is that—is that in two, or is that in three?
Two.
Two. Yes.
Is it the one I have on the screen?
Yes.
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 And so this would be the potential Veterans Memorial Plaza?
Which the parking lot would be built around that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Yes.
There's signage on the access road for Willow Park landscaping. And I think what Brian is saying is that we could get probably the electrical, the light, some of the bare bones in with the concrete, with no plantings and pretty stuff, flat holes and all of that, if we wanted to do it now. If we want to do—go out to bid for what this is, for what the plans are, then we'd be piecemealing it and asking our bids to remove certain areas to meet what we have available fund-wise. We don't think it's significant. I think if you're looking at the cost estimate of about $600,000 for Veterans Plaza, we're looking at probably an additional $250,000 that we don't have on hand, maybe $250,000 to $500,000 for this. So maybe roughly around $1 million that we would allow for to get it all done. A Veterans Plaza with all the landscaping and pretties of City Hall. So I think what—I would be proposing is that we postpone the bid process for the parking lot until we can get a design for Veterans Memorial included. I'll make a motion that we postpone the bid process for the parking lot project until we can get a conceptual design plans for Veterans Memorial.
How long would it take to do the parking lot? Just the parking lot?
I think you said about four to five months to have it done.
Okay, so that'd be going into the first year?
I'll second that motion.
All right, okay.
What's the current parking needs and situation? Are we—like, by pushing this four or five months? We're not bursting at the seams in the parking lot currently, are we? Do we—
You—with—with—I've been told to speak into the microphone. With McKnight and with Sylvan, with school kicking back up, there are—and obviously, you have city vehicles parked out in the dirt, anyway, right now, as it is. Are we busting at the seams? Yes and no? I mean, we—the city vehicles—when we have a meeting with developments or with other multiple parties, it gets full pretty quick.
But we're using the gravel area.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're utilizing what we would be paving.
Right. I'm just trying to get—as we paint a picture for the future, if we are delaying things another, you know, several months, if that's the case, then I just wanted to see, you know, what the situation looked like. Do we need to get paved spaces? And obviously, it's built for the future, but we want to make sure that we're—
I think we can hold on for—I don't think we're going to have that much of a need in it in the short term. Long term, we're going to need to address, obviously, your parking cars and dirt.
Right.
Yeah, I'd prefer to see what data the Parks group collects and what the citizens want to do. And I think we ought to just hold off then before we start.
I think we have a motion and a second. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number four, to approve the third quarter financial report.
Good evening. This is going to be third quarter, so this is going to be through June 30th, financial results. Again, I'll just kind of hit on some of the high points, and I'll touch on what y'all were just discussing as well to give you a little bit of some of the cash available for that. You know, it was last month, we met and did the budget amendments, so those are reflected on here. And because of those, now we're tracking in line with it. As you'd expect, we just made those amendments. So in terms of your sales tax revenue, your property tax revenue, those are tracking with the new budget numbers. You can see just on the high level, that summary, that we're at a surplus on general fund of $741,000. And so when you look at that number, the main reason on that is really our capital expenditures have been minimal this year. We haven't spent a lot. There was $250,000 budgeted for park improvements and $175,000 for council-approved expenditure. So those are things, again, that we had—that are in the budget, have not been spent. And then also, I was going to mention that last year, when y'all issued the debt for this building, we got 8.5 in cash. The cost of building was basically 8.1. So there's—it's $386,000 that we have carried into this year, so that could also go towards—that. So you're looking at about $800,000. I—you said $750,000, so about $800,000 between the unused cash from this year and the unused cash from this building. So when you're thinking about cash available, that's about $800,000 without going to another source, you know, another revenue source, something like that. The other thing on general fund, I'll just mention, you know, we're at surplus of $741,000. That will shrink as we get into the last three months just because, yeah, obviously, our tax collections are done for our property tax. So I still think we'll have a surplus again unless we go spend some of that capital improvement money. So again, the general fund is really—even with the lower tax revenue, because, you know, kind of keep an eye on spending and some development fees, things like that, still in a good position on general fund. Water fund, again, it shows a deficit of $382,000. Basically, the opposite on that. I—I think that fund will probably break even this year. You know, you're up $71,000 on your user fees over last year, so you're seeing a little increase on water expenses. You know, you're getting a little more inflationary pressure on the water with some of our supplies and chemicals and even labor costs. So that's why, you know, that fund used to have a little more excess cash, but it's basically break even now. You know, I know we did have the $200,000 transfer to wastewater. And also, you've spent $239,000 buying water from Fort Worth, right? So that's another outflow that we didn't have before. So again, the fund's in a good position. It has good reserves, that fund. We built up reserves in the past. And then wastewater, I'll mention, so again, you see on there, it says—it shows a surplus of $615,000. That number is a little deceiving. So built into that, just—you know, we've recorded interest income on—you know, we've had $14 million in cash from the debt issuance on that package—or the wastewater treatment plant that has just now started to be spent. So if you pull out, so that interest income is $652,000. So if you take that out, you're basically break even on wastewater, right? And that's with the $200,000 transferred in. But again, I—I touched on this last time. Positive news on that fund. That fund was a big concern. Our revenue, user charges, are up $374,000 year over year. So it's basically self-sustaining now, or it's moving that direction, which was a huge issue a year ago, and we've kind of been able to address that. And then the only thing I'll—that I know is a future thing to think about is now, you know, in terms of user charges, you have that fund where it needs to be. You know, if you have a buy-in from Hudson Oaks, if that comes into play and you have that cash, start maybe thinking about how do you utilize that, whether it be for future projects or paid-on debt or that kind of thing. And obviously, the old plant and what you do with that. But the good news there is that that fund is starting to get back on track. Just some other comments. The road—you know, the money left there is about $540,000, but really, it's less than that because there's invoices that we've paid since this date.
Yep.
So I think most of that will get used up. Drainage, again, from the debt there, there's about $1.4 million that's available on that. There might be some that gets allocated to road. I know that's something that Gretchen has worked with in terms of looking at those projects and making sure that money's getting spent how it should. And then the only thing is, I know on the—I've mentioned before on that Fort Worth water line, we had had some extra cash, about $1.4 million. And I believe y'all just purchased, put an escrow payment on some land for another lift station.
Yep. No, no, well, yeah, we bought 205 Canyon Court.
So that's—that's being addressed. Y'all are going to spend that, I guess, right, for improvements, which is what you'd have to do.
Yes.
Yeah. I know that's just something we've touched on in the past. Any questions on the financials?
I do have a question. The interest we got in our wastewater fund, I know we transferred money from water to wastewater. Should we go put some back, and then that way, that evens that out?
Well, that—the interest right now is—that's restricted. So it's earned within that bond account, so we have to use that. Now, again, I think that would be one of the considerations if you have, for example, let's say Hudson Oaks would come and buy in. So now you do have extra cash. You've already issued the debt for the project. Do you repay your water fund, all that money you borrowed? I mean, that's—that's an option. Yeah, absolutely. But in terms of the interest, we would need to leave that and make it spend on the construction.
Got it.
Any other questions for Jake? Thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
Do we need a—
Pat, me take—
A motion to approve the third quarter financial report? I make a motion to approve the third quarter financial report.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Jake. Item number five, to discuss and take action on—to adopt the city's financial policy.
Andy?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. The city's financial policy was last updated in 2018. The auditors have requested we increase the capitalization threshold from $2,500,000 to $10,000,000. Therefore, we have submitted an updated policy which reflects the new capitalization threshold. Along with that change, we also made a couple of other changes. We removed the depository RFP selection timeline and the auditing RFQ selection timeline due. The policy requires us to release a depository RFP and a auditing RFQ at least once every five years. We feel there is no reason to have a timeline built into the policy. We also removed the after-five consecutive years audits. With one auditing firm, the city must use a different auditing firm for at least the next year. We discussed this among the staff and with the auditors and felt it was overly cautious and not needed. It is staff's recommendation that the City Council adopt and approve the updated financial policy.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions? Or do we have a motion?
I move to accept and approve the updated financial policy for the city of Willow Park.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Andy. Item number six, to discuss and take action, to consider all matters incident or related to the issuance and sale of City of Willow Park, Texas, combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation, series 2024A, including the adoption of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of such certificates in the amount not to exceed $5,135,000 to finance the cost of paying contractual obligations to be incurred for constructing, acquiring, purchasing, renovating, enlarging, equipping, and improve, proving waste, improving water and wastewater system properties or facilities, including the acquisition of land and rights of way therefore, and professional services rendered in connection with such projects and financing thereof. Mr. Grimes.
Yes, this is for a development that we have been working on. When we issued the notice back in June, we anticipated that we would have a developer's agreement for your consideration at this meeting. That developer's agreement has not been finalized, and we are still working on it. We feel, and I think Pat agrees, we're pretty close to, to have an agreement. We consulted with Kristin Savant with Norton Rose Fulbright, and we are allowed to postpone the meeting to the September 20, is it, what's the second meeting in September? Is it 27th?
The second meeting in September?
Yes.
It is the 2020.
24th, okay. I've got August and September dates confused. We can postpone this to the September 24th meeting. We just need to make it a date certain in the motion, and staff recommendation is that we do that.
So we're moving this motion to the September 24th?
Yes, there's a, there's a suggested motion in the packet.
Okay.
I move that the city council postpone the consideration of all matters relating to the issuance and sale of the city of Willow Park, Texas, combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation, series 2024A, to the regular city council meeting on September 24th, 2024.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next item, tax rate and budget workshop for the fiscal year 2425. Mr. Grimes.
Yes, this is the second workshop that we're having on the budget. Added to this is the 2024 tax rate calculating, calculation worksheet from the CAD. I can geek out on some of that, on the numbers if y'all would like.
No.
Basically, our tax values are going to remain somewhat flat. We did benefit on the debt side of new property from last year, but our M&amp;O value increased minimally. I have the worksheet in there that I've used for the last six years. Y'all can question me on that if you'd like, but we are looking at a small tax rate increase on the M&amp;O and on the interest and sinking rate. We are still underneath the voter-approved rate, however, so we will, we will be underneath that cap. One of the other things I added to this, I don't think y'all have actually seen this spreadsheet, or at least Leah reminded me, they haven't seen it in years. Keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going. Back, 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 right there. So we've been having discussions about the debt cliff that me and Jake so aptly named a couple of years ago. What we're talking about is, that highlighted portion in your packet is what we reported to the CAD, $2,62,942. That is our debt requirement, for all intents and purposes, in February of '25. That will remain relatively unchanged for February of '26. So two years from now, when we're setting the debt rate, you're going to drop off about $600,000 in your debt service. That's the cliff that we're talking about. And depending on what the values do, you're probably looking at a substantial tax rate decrease, but it also gives you some capacity to do some capital projects that may have been put on hold.
So looking at that, we have the water and wastewater, which there isn't really a cliff. These do not reflect the potential, what we just postponed?
Mm-hmm.
The $5 million, so that will have those not decreasing like they are, I assume?
Yes.
Okay.
And by the way, so your, your water, wastewater, your debt service is your tax rate, your water and wastewater are paid for through your user fees, your, your revenue bonds, self-sustaining bonds, as Eric likes to put them. And obviously, those are relatively flat throughout, but wanted to...
We wanted to make use of that $600,000 roughly of debt that drops off for more road development. When would we specifically, talking about Squaw Creek, when did we start putting things in place, engineering and start water lines and things like that? What's our timeline leading up to that, so we can sync that up without having to?
Generally speaking, generally speaking, I think you could probably do that. You could probably do the engineering in nine months to a year, surveying and getting plans and everything ready to go. You'd want, you could probably start the water side of it before you'd want to do the street, I'm assuming, Michelle, just generally speaking. So you could separate that, and it's a big price tag for Squaw Creek, but you could break that out into 30% or 40% waterline replacement and 60% street repair. And so not all of that, and I won't say $10 million, I'm just throwing that number out there. It's, not all that $10 million would go towards your debt service. You could, you know, $4 million of it or $5 million could be for waterline replacement, and the other could be for, for street repair.
Okay. So about a year from now, we can start having those conversations, do you get those?
Oh, yeah.
Listened up then, or less?
Yes, a year or less.
So on his question, just looking at that, that's debt issuance for something other than water and wastewater?
Yep.
Portions in 2026?
Mm-hmm.
For the fiscal year 2627?
Yep.
Where that, if we're preparing, we could have something ready to go to do debt issuance in '26. That's what I...
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, item, next item.
Real quick, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. You also have a notice of a tax rate increase. We got the ad ready to go. We're still on schedule for adopting the budget on September the 10th. At the next meeting, we will have a vote on the proposed tax rate. That's still correct, right, Pat? Yeah. They'll vote at the next meeting for the proposed tax rate. We'll run the ad that's attached in the paper, and then on September the 10th, we'll adopt the budget and the tax rate. I need to know if anybody is going to be gone on September the 10th. We need a supermajority quorum, so I'm going to need four of the five voting members present before we can take action. So if you, if you know for sure right now September the 10th's not going to work, let me know.
Thank you. Everybody's good. Okay, next, next item, is to adopt an ordinance enacting the city's new code of ordinances.
Yes, Mayor, Council. Back in 2022, if you remember that far back, we decided that it was in the best interest for the city to go ahead and completely recodify the code of ordinances. Fast forward to two years later, we have finally completed that. This ordinance that is being presented to you is to adopt a new code of ordinances for the city, and once we've adopted this ordinance, then Franklin will begin the production of the code for us in paper and upload it on our website for us.
To be clear, Franklin Legal, not Chief Franklin.
Oh, wait. That's part of your contract.
You didn't know you were responsible for that, too? So I am asking Council to please adopt this ordinance, to adopt the new code of ordinances, so we can be all caught up and...
Thank you for, thank you for doing that.
Would you like to read the caption?
Nobody was more excited to get this than me. Like, I could not wait to get into the office to sit here and read this, this code. An ordinance of the city of Willow Park, Texas, adopting and enacting a new code of ordinances, providing for the repeal of certain ordinances not included therein, providing penalty for the violations thereof, not exceeding $500, generally or not exceeding $2,000 for violations relating to fire safety, zoning, or public health and sanitation, or not exceeding $4,000 for the violations relating to dumping of refuse. Providing for the amendment of such code and providing when such code in this ordinance shall become effective.
Thank you. We have the ordinance written. Do we have a motion, please?
Make a motion that we accept the ordinance as read by the city secretary.
Motion, second, please.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next item, to approve a resolution appointing a voting member and alternate to the Fort Worth Wholesale Water and Wastewater Custom, Customer Advisory Committee.
Yes, I got it. Don't worry about it. I'm not going to make you walk up here. By the way, I want to welcome Michelle back from sick leave, and so we're glad to see her smiling face. This is the same resolution we've approved every year since we've been a member of the Wholesale Advisory Committee. Basically, we will appoint or continue Michelle being the voting member on behalf of the city of Willow Park, and Gretchen Vasquez will be the alternate member. We've done this two, three years now?
Three years.
Yeah. The only change was they took me off as a voting member because Michelle doesn't like me, but other than that, it's been the same.
I like her even more now.
Do we have a motion, please?
Make a motion, I just lost it here. Okay, I make a motion to approve a resolution appointing a voting member and alternate to the Fort Worth Wholesale Water and Wastewater Customer Advisory Committee as, do I need to name the names, or?
Yes.
Michelle Governor and Gretchen Vasquez.
Yes.
Michelle and Gretchen.
Yes.
We have a motion, please? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. This time, the council will be going in executive session at 6:41 PM. Is that right?
Correct.
Do we need, do we need to state the?
Yes.
Okay.
Just go down to...
Consultation with attorney, half and associates litigation, and economic development negotiations, 551071, consultation with city attorney, bail development agreement, and Brothers in Christ annexation, 6:42 PM. Take action on an ordinance rescinding ordinance number 90524, adopted at the June 11th, 2024 council meeting, accepting a petition to expand the city of Willow Park's extraterritorial jurisdiction to include 3.208 acre tract and a 228.4 acre tract of land owned by Brothers in Christ Properties LLC. Pat, will you read the caption, please?
And that is 2402, you're doing 12 first?
I'm sorry?
The 10.
10.
Okay. Okay, got you. A proposed motion could be a move to approve an ordinance of the city council, the city of Willow Park, Texas, rescinding and repealing ordinance number 90524, adopted at the June 11th, 2024 city council meeting, accepting a petition to expand the city of Willow Park's extraterritorial jurisdiction to include two tracts of property located, owned by Brothers in Christ Properties LLC, a 3.208 acre tract and a 228.4 acre tract into the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Willow Park, providing a severability clause, providing a savings clause, providing for...
Thank you. Do we have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the ordinance as read.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Pat, will you pull your mic down, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number 11, consider and take action on the resolution, rescinding resolution number 2024-01, adopted at the June 11th, 2024 council meeting, declaring the city's intent to begin annexation of 7,313 feet of East Bankhead Highway. Pat?
Yes, Council, a proposed, a motion could be, I move to approve a resolution of the city council, the city of Willow Park, Texas, rescinding and repealing resolution number 202401, adopted at the June 11th, 2024 city council meeting, declaring the city's intent to begin annexation of approximately 7,313 feet of East Bankhead Highway right-of-way, comprising approximately 10.98 acres of land into the territorial limits of the city of Willow Park.
Thank you. Do we have a motion, please?
Make a motion to accept that as stated by the city.
Do we have a motion? Second, please.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number 12, consider and take action on a resolution, rescinding resolution number 2024-02, adopted at the June 11th, 2024 council meeting, accepting the annexation petitions from Brothers in Christ Properties LLC for a 3.208 acre tract and a 228.4 acre tract. Pat?
Mayor, Council, a proposed motion could be a resolution of the city council, the city, I move to approve a resolution of the city council, the city of Willow Park, Texas, rescinding and repealing resolution number 202402, adopted at the June 11th, 2024 city council meeting, accepting two petitions from property owner Brothers in Christ Properties LLC, requesting annexation of two tracts of land and approximately 3.208 acre tract and an approximately 228.24 acre tract. And you might just say so moved.
Thank you. Motion, please, to take action?
I make a motion to approve the resolution as read.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Any city council comments, please? Thank you.
Greg kept looking at me like he was about to say something.
Thanks, everyone, for your time and, and service. City manager comments, you have one minute.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It's been a great day today, and four score and seven years ago.
Motion to adjourn, or you gonna say something?
TML, TML is August, is October 9th through the 11th. We have a number of spots open. It'll be in Houston, which is also the hometown of the first-place Houston Astros. Just thought I'd let, remind Bill of that. And so if you, if you do want to go to TML, I think we've got two or three spots open. Tomorrow, we have the chamber luncheon. Congressman Roger Williams will be the keynote address. We have one or two spots available if any council members would like to attend that as well.
I'm just saying, if you want to go to TML, that there may be a playoff game during that time.
Ribbon cutting Thursday.
And we also have a ribbon cutting at Kingsgate Park for the bike trail.
Yes, Thursday.
On Thursday. I can tell you, there's a happy 14-year-old kid in my neighborhood who lives in my house that's thoroughly enjoying the bike trail, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Thank you.
That's the first time we did that back in Texas.